Welcome everyone. Good to see everyone tonight. And we'll just go through the agenda here. We got most, we got everything on the agenda. Bob, did you have anything to add in regards to changing the agenda tonight?
No, we won't be adding anything. No, we were just talking with legal counsel and just the only thing we'll be doing is just announcing how the hiring process where it's at. And then that the, with the new merit board coming into play, we're going to be waiting until that gets moved forward to actually move forward with the hiring process.
Can you, can you expound on the merit board as far as what's transpired since the last time we met? Have the, have the people been chosen for that board yet, Bob?
Yeah, everybody's been chosen. The fire department has.
And are you at liberty to tell us who they are or not yet or?
I, I think I've got the.
Yeah, I don't have the whole list.
The list or the applicants. So in the last week or so, since everyone was chosen, the vote was finalized. We did get one candidate that was nominated from the floor, so to speak, at the time of the vote. That was Paul Petrie. And then we've got Thomas Falk, who was a council or council president appointment. Roger Florkowitz, again, that appointment was coming from the council or the council president. Dave Turaki. And Tim Arvenitis. And let's see, is there one more? That might be, there should be five. That's, that's it. Yeah.
Is it four or five?
It's, it's five.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So now we're just waiting for the, we got two candidates, I think, that still got to come in and sign their oath. And then we got to start, get a meeting scheduled and then get policies and procedures and put in place right away for that board.
Yeah, basically the idea is now that we've got a board that's constituted and I, I think that we've sufficiently reviewed all the applications and confirmed that everyone appears to be eligible and it's statutorily compliant. We're going to hold the first meeting sometime very soon here because I know the fire department has business to take care of. But we'll have to attend to setting dates for the regular meetings of the merit board. There's going to be a question about the terms of the members of the five. Two of them are going to be two-year terms for this initial appointment so that it, it works on a staggered system. Everybody else gets four-year terms. So we'll have to figure out, you know, who are those two-year terms going to be? And there's, there's a few other business items that'll need to be attended to. But I'm going to be sending something to, to the board members and coordinating with the town to, to get the meeting dates down. And hopefully we can get that first meeting in the next week or two here and, and get things going. We, we have to establish procedures for how the board is, is going to function. And then we have 90 days from the date of appointment, basically, to establish further procedures on the actual substance of how hiring and firing and, and discipline and, and those decisions are, are going to work.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Thanks for the update. And then under correspondence, old business and new business, Chief Patterson, I see that there's nothing new.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Um, I have a question for the fire department, Bob Patterson. I'd like to know what the status is of the central fire station that was being contemplated.
Good question. We just, I just met with the CSK yesterday, finalizing the exact layout of the station on the property. So they can start moving forward with the engineering and that for the land and what they're going to have to do with the land around the station. So it is moving forward and hopefully we'll hear something soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other business, Chief Patterson?
No.
Okay, very good. Chief Formas, do you want to kind of do, give an overview of the meeting for tonight?
Yeah, thank you. As you see in front of you, you'll have two sets of minutes that we have prepared. The first set of minutes will be for the February 6th meeting, which was last month's meeting. And then the 20th is our special meeting. So we'll need that for a form of a motion tonight as, as we conduct business normally. And then under correspondence, we received a thank you letter from Chief Potesta from Highland. We assisted them on a call for February 2nd, 2025. Just thanked us for our response and to assist him. With that, under old business, we don't have anything. And then on the new business, we annually, the Sheriff of Police Department honors its sworn and civilian members of the department with recognition for exemplary service. And we will start off with those, that award ceremony and recognition with the investigative division and Commander Wagner. We'll be presenting that award. And then for the patrol division, Commander Bork will be presenting that award to the officer that was selected by our committee. Line Adam D, it's our life-saving, life-saving award. Corporal Josette Coroga, she will be presenting the life-saving award to the officer. And then under the civilian award, we have our records manager and our record slash Southcom dispatch manager, Kelly Winkupa, she'll be presenting that award. And then we have two retirements. We have two of our K-9s retired recently. And that's K-9 Hawk and K-9 Juno. And Officer Birmingham, who was our K-9, one of our K-9s also, and worked on our power shift. He will be doing the presentation for the K-9 awards for the retirement. And then for the VIPS, which is our volunteers in policing, for their service recognition, we'll have Corporal Staley. He's their immediate supervisor and their, and the corporal training and slash Kalia manager. And then we will have, on line Adam H, we will have the swearing-in ceremony for Devin Watkins. That's, that's the officer that we gave a conditional to last month, or I'm sorry, on the 20th for the special meeting. He will be here tonight for the swearing-in. And then we will be asking the board to approve two conditional offers, one for Stephen Hawkins and the second one for Joshua Lawson. So that pretty much sums it up for our new business. And then on the reports, we have our annual coffee with the cop, which will be held on March 13th next week over at the McDonald's just south of US 30 and 41. And that'll start at 9:11 and conclude at, that'll start at 9:00 AM and conclude at 11:00, 11:00 AM. So it's a two-hour annual coffee with the cop event. Hope everybody is able to make it.
I think those are the plans for sure. If, if by chance Luke or Keith are here when you do that letter from Highland, you can have them, you can point them out.
What was that?
If the two officers involved in that, I don't think if they're here, when you, when you talk about that letter from Highland, if they're here, because usually you have.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to point them out.
It'd be nice to, to point them out today.
Let me see which ones.
It's a key, it's a Luke and Keith. Yeah, yeah.
Let me just, but I have, I have the letter here, so I'll just.
Okay.
And also Luke Perkrocky, he's our CTD, which is our cross-trained detective also. So he does the detective bureau as well as patrol. And Keith Acock, he's in patrol, assigned as a patrol officer there, also an army medic. That's why he's.
Yes.
The skills to assist with some of these situations.
Okay, sounds like a full agenda, that's for sure. Anything else, guys?
Nothing, nothing from here. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to.
Commander Bork, I, I forgot those things you asked me to bring, but I'll drop out of the office sometime and drop them off for tomorrow. Okay, sir. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, then we can take a short break before the meeting starts, correct?
Thank you, yes.
The Towne Sheriville Board of Safety Meeting for March sixth, two thousand and twenty five. I would ask that you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the symbol of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united as one nation visible with the people of our country.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Eric Graff.
Here.
George Chorus.
Here.
David Ennigenberg.
Here.
David Jarazuski.
President.
Robert Volkman.
Here.
Christian Bartholomew, Attorney.
Present.
Police Chief Peter Sormoz.
Here.
Deputy Chief of Police Steve McNamara.
Here.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Recording Secretary Stephanie Bodiger, here.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll need two, uh, two motions for this. First one is for the, uh, Board of Safety, approval of the minutes for the February sixth, two thousand and twenty five meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and I'll need a second.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any conversation, gentlemen? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just for clarification, do we need the, the roll call vote on these?
I was just gonna recommend that, yes.
Okay, yeah, cuz I know we discussed that last time. So Stephanie, if you'll go ahead and do the, uh, roll call vote.
Eric Graff.
Aye.
George Chorus.
Aye.
David Ennigenberg.
Aye.
David Jarazuski.
Aye.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second, uh, approval of the minutes for the Board of Safety Meeting for February twentieth, twenty five. I'll need that in the form of a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any conversation in regard to the meeting February twentieth? Hearing none. We'll need a roll call vote, please, Stephanie.
Eric Graff.
Aye.
George Chorus.
Aye.
David Ennigenberg.
Aye.
David Jarazuski.
Aye.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to the correspondents. We'll start with, uh, Fire Chief Patterson, correspondents.
None at this time.
Thank you. Move on to, uh, Chief Sormoz with the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one letter of correspondence from our Highland Police Department thanking us for, uh, the officers that responded on February second, two thousand and twenty five to the area of ninety-six hundred block of Forest Drive for shots fired, call. And the officers that responded were Luke McRocky and Keith Hickock. And both officers in the audience here tonight, we'd like to thank them for their response to assist our neighboring agency, Highland.
Good job, gentlemen. We'll move on to old business, starting with, uh, Chief Sormoz, old business.
None to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Fire Chief Patterson, old business.
None to report.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. We'll start with you, Fire Chief Patterson.
No new business.
Thank you, sir. We'll go on to item B, uh, uh, Chief Sormoz. Item B is the Investigative Division Award.
Yeah, thank you. Annually, the Sheriville Police Department recognizes both its sworn and civilian, uh, staff for their exemplary service throughout the year. And tonight, we're gonna start off with the Investigative Division Award. That's gonna be presented by Commander Kevin Wagner of the Investigative Division. Kevin, can you step up and?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I will be presenting the award for the two thousand and twenty four Detective of the Year. Before I do this, I would like to recognize everyone that was part of the Detective Bureau last year. I would first like to recognize our cross-trained detectives. We had five officers that participated in this program last year. These officers worked with their shift on midnights and when the schedule allowed the Detective Bureau on days. The first cross-trained detective was Officer Carroga, who was in this program from January through mid-March when she was promoted to corporal. Officers Gerbik and Ruzga were part of this program the entire year. Officer Paprocki started this program in June, and Officer Garza started this program in August. We also had a full-time staff that consisted of Sergeant Quinn, Corporal Segovia, Detective Bonadonna, Detective Nangle, Detective Knight, Detective Mendez, and Detective Savage. Last year, the Detective Bureau handled eight hundred and thirty-two incidents and filed six hundred and ninety-five charges. Both of these are the highest numbers that we have ever had. To put these numbers into perspective, just five years ago, when I started keeping these stats, we only had five hundred and twenty incidents and two hundred and seventy-seven charges. Every officer and detective that I mentioned earlier played a part in the success of the Detective Bureau on two thousand and twenty-four, and I would like to thank each and every one of them for all their hard work last year. Now, with all of that being said, there were three detectives that were nominated for this award. All three were nominated for their hard work and dedication to the Sheriville Police Department. The three detectives that were nominated were Detective Bonadonna, Detective Mendez, and Detective Savage. After discussion, discussions and a voting process, it was determined that the Detective of the Year Award for two thousand and twenty-four will be going to Detective Mendez. Detective. Detective Mendez has remained one of the hardest-working detectives at the Sheriville Police Department over the past few years. He has consistently remained near the top in both incidents handled and charges filed. There are a number of cases that I can reference to highlight the great job that Detective Mendez has done throughout the year. There was one case that stuck out to me from last year, though. At approximately two seventeen AM on June twenty-eighth, two subjects showed up to a local business on minibikes wearing masks and gloves. The subject used a sledgehammer and broke through the front window. Once inside, the subjects caused approximately forty thousand dollars in damage and left with approximately three hundred thousand dollars' worth of merchandise. Using the LPR system, Detective Mendez was able to locate a truck with minibikes in the back that matched the ones used in our burglary. The truck was located in the area days later by a neighboring town. Detective Mendez then got back to work and conducted multiple interviews, completed multiple search warrants, and spent countless hours going through cellphone data. In all, he worked on and off on this case for approximately five months. In November of two thousand and twenty-four, the prosecutor's office approved burglary and theft charges on the three subjects involved in this incident. This case was a great example of the determination, time management, and work ethic that Detective Mendez has shown year after year. I would like to thank Detective Mendez for his hard work throughout the year and congratulate him on his continued success here at the Sheriville Police Department.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, line item C. This is the Patrol Division Award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we'd like to have Commander Bork come up and announce the Patrol Division Award.
Uh, real quick, in a, uh, night of recognition, we do have a birthday in the house. Corporal Adam Biella is celebrating his birthday today. Uh, I'd like to start with the nominees. Uh, first, I wanna talk about Shift One. Sergeant Hunter nominated Officer Garza, badge number two-two-seven, with an emphasis of his de-escalation skills and his dedication to the multiple disciplines in law enforcement, Patrol, the Cross Train Detective Program, and the Northwest Regional SWAT Team. Sergeant Hunter also acknowledges the fierce competition of his two thousand and twenty-four Shift One roster as he believed he had multiple candidates for that nomination. Nominee Garza. Shift Two. Sergeant Jansen nominated Officer Spurnell, badge number two-oh-seven, with the emphasis of his contribution to the newly-formed South County Crash Team. Officer Spurnell was instrumental in the investigations of two major crashes in two thousand and twenty-four, with hours of hard work and meticulous work, one being a fatal accident, a motorist versus a bicycle, another being a personal injury accident, a motorist versus a motorcycle. And Sergeant Jansen also acknowledges Officer Spurnell's stat rankings, not only on Shift Three, but also within the top twenty-five percent of the Patrol Division. Nominee Spurnell. Shift Three. Sergeant Daniels nominated Officer Hickock, badge number two-three-three, with the emphasis of his actions in a life-saving event with a gunshot victim, an emphasis you will hear more about later on in the evening. Sergeant Daniels also acknowledges Officer Hickock being the first officer to achieve activity in all thirteen categories of our monthly performance standard since its enactment in March of two thousand and twenty-two. Officer Hickock did so in just a short time, being with the Sheriville Police Department. Nominee Hickock. First, I wanna read, uh, uh, bits of Sergeant Warris's, uh, letter as we acknowledge the recipient of the, uh, Officer of the Year Award. "It brings me great pleasure to announce that Officer Ryan Egger, badge number two-fourteen, is the Shift Four, two thousand and twenty-four nomination for Officer of the Year. It should be known that Corporal Rubino and I discussed our nomination thoroughly. We would like to give recognition to Officer Karas and Officer Tankos, who are also considered. However, we believe that Officer Egger separated himself through his actions in the performance standard, training of the newly-sworn Officer Banstra, commitment to the field training program, leadership on Shift Four, and his dedication to the Sheriville Police Department. Officer Egger is a four-point, uh, four-and-a-half-year veteran with the Sheriville Police Department, and he has a total of six-and-a-half years of experience as a law enforcement officer. At the end of two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Egger received the year of the end, the end-of-the-year evaluation from Sergeant Jansen, and in two thousand and twenty-three, Sergeant Jansen bestowed the following challenges onto Officer Egger for the year of two thousand and twenty-four: increase overall productivity in the performance standard, excel in the field training program, and represent the Sheriville Police Department in a positive and professional manner. In January, two thousand and twenty-four, Officer Egger was assigned to Shift Four under Corporal Rubino and my direct supervision. Officer Egger finished two thousand and twenty-four improving statistically in eight of thirteen categories. Officer Egger finished the year with forty-seven custodial arrest, which was a forty-seven percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. Officer Egger finished the year with thirteen felony charges, which is a forty-four percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. Officer Egger finished the year with fifty-nine misdemeanor charges, which was a forty percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three, and he finished the year with nineteen select special citations, which was a two-hundred-and-sixteen percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. Officer Egger finished the year with, uh, four, fifty-four accident reports, a sixty-eight percent increase, and lastly, he finished the year with five-hundred-and-nine incident reports, which was a four percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. As the saying goes, the numbers don't lie. It's clear that Officer Egger took the twenty-twenty, took on two thousand and twenty-four, determined to meet the challenge placed on him by Sergeant Jansen. Most impressively in the year of two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Egger contributed eighty-nine hours in training for the field training program. But in two thousand and twenty-four, Officer Egger contributed four-hundred-and-twenty-six hours training in the field training program, which was a three-hundred-and-eighty-two percent increase. Uh, Sergeant Warris goes on with some numbers, uh, in terms of the FTO program. Uh, in the gist, uh, the people that he trained came back and said that Egger is one of their better FTOs, just through his meticulous and thorough instruction. On a, on a personal note from my point of view with Officer Egger, um, those of you that don't know, the Officer of the Year Award is determined by a panel of five personnel: the deputy chief, the detective commander, the patrol commander, the FOP president of Lodge one-seventy, and the president of the Board of Safety. I've had the pleasure of being on the panel for the last seven years, both as FOP president and patrol commander, and I've always been impressed with the nomination letters and the deliber, deliberation amongst the panel. But this year, I was impressed with something else. Now, the recipient is selected from a ranking system with, with dedicated points, which allows every vote to mean something, uh, mu, much like we do with openings at the PD or surveys for the FOP. And basically, what we're just saying is if you get ranked number one, you get the most points. You get ranked number two, you get the second-most points, so on and so forth. We total those points up at the end, and then, and then we find our recipient. The point of me telling you this and what I was most impressed about. After reading the letters, after the deliberation, each panel member filled out their ranking sheet and turned them in. And not only is the ranking sheet anonymous, but this year, it was unanimous. We all had Officer Egger ranked as number one, and he received the most points a nominee can receive. These points came from the recognition of his overall improvement, performance, attitude, investment, value, the main themes of Sergeant Warris's recommendation letter. Every panel member had a comment or a story acknowledging his growth, and here is mine. This is a story, with Officer Egger's permission, I shared with the entire Patrol Division during our two thousand and twenty-four mandatory patrol meeting at the beginning of the year. About midway through two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Egger was called to a meeting with his supervisors and myself, where he received some constructive criticism. As we all know, sometimes construct, constructive criticism is not easy, just like falling down is not easy. It can be handled many different ways: excuses, blaming others, staying down, or it can be handled by getting back up and moving forward. A week after that meeting, I asked Officer Egger's supervisors how he was doing. They reported no issues. A month after that meeting, I asked Officer Egger's supervisors how he was doing. They reported, he's a whole new dude. At the end of the year, I asked one more time how he was doing, and they responded, honestly, I think he should test for supervisor. At the very least, he should FTO our next hires. Again, another theme of Sergeant Warris's recommendation letter. I shared that story with the Patrol Division last year for the simple point, your career is yours. It's what you wanna do with it, it's what you wanna make it, and at any time, you could put your foot in the ground and you can change direction. It would have been really easy for Officer Egger to take that story, and which is by all means is a compliment, and plateau, rest on that success. But instead, he continued moving forward in his new direction and impressed not only his two thousand and twenty-four supervisors, but all five panel members with his growth. Simply put, and because he's a baseball guy, he kept swinging in two thousand and twenty-four, and he knocked it out of the park. So in closing, Ryan, you didn't stop in two thousand and twenty-four, don't stop now. Two thousand and twenty-four Officer of the Year, Ryan Egger, badge number two-fourteen.
Okay, we'll move on to line item D. This is the Life Saving Award. Chief Sormoz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I'd like to call Corporal Jose Carroga to the podium to announce the Life Saving Award.
I have to move this down a little. Just kidding, it's gonna hit me in the face.
Let this bezer take it out.
All right, good evening, everyone. I wanted to first say thank you to the board members for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Sheriville Police Department in reference to Officer Keith Hickock, badge two-thirty-three, and thank you to all of those that are in attendance for your time and support. Officer Hickock was hired with the Sheriville Police Department, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. He completed his probationary period after completing an abbreviated field training process and will complete a full year with the Sheriville Police Department coming up here soon on March eighteen, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Officer Hickock came to the Sheriville Police Department with several years of law enforcement, paramedic, and military experience. Officer Hickock set out to become a tactical medication, TacMed for short, instructor, and obtained his certificate and such in September, two thousand and twenty-four. A short time later, Officer Hickock was tasked with utilizing those, uh, skills and his experience without the training that he, uh, received in the following incident. On November eleventh of two thousand and twenty-four, at approximately six forty-five PM, Sheriville officers were dispatched to the area of Klein Avenue and Joliet Street in reference to a male subject who had been shot by a friend. The caller reported that the victim was shot in the chest, but he was alert and conscious. Due to the nature of the call, officers took the necessary precautions to prevent further injuries. As officers arrived to the scene, the suspect vehicle was located, a felony stop was conducted, and the shooter was detained. Officers were then informed that another subject fled the scene and was armed with a handgun. While officers were searching the immediate area for another possible shooter-at-large, Officer Hickock located the victim, his name is Alex Miller, established a rapport with him, and immediately started life-saving measures. Officer Hickock used trauma shears to cut Alex's shirt, exposing his torso, and evaluated the injuries. A wound was located in Alex's left armpit, and a hyphen chest seal was applied to seal the wound. Officer Hickock instructed the assisting officers how to safely rotate Alex and examined his back for additional wounds. Another wound was located on his back, and a second hyphen chest seal was used to seal that wound. Sheriville Fire Department took over medical evaluation and treatment until the victim was airlifted to, uh, the University of Chicago Trauma Center for further treatment. Officers located the subject-at-large and detained him for questioning. Sheriville detectives initiated an investigation to determine a possible motive for that shooting. Detective Knight led the investigation and stayed in contact with Alex's family. Detective Knight led the investigation and stayed in contact with Alex's family throughout his treatment and surgeries. Detective Knight was informed that Alex underwent surgery. He did suffer first from some complications after, but he was told whoever sealed Alex's wounds is the reason that he is alive. For that reason, we are off, we are nominating Officer Hickock for the Life Saving Award to make sure that we recognize his efforts, and I want to thank Alex because he is here in the audience to support Officer Hickock as well. Congratulations, Officer Hickock.
Okay, we'll move on to line item E. This is the Civilian Award. Chief Sormas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now I'd like to call our records manager and our South Com manager, Kelly Winke, to the podium to announce the Civilian Award.
Good evening. If Civilian of the Year is all about serious incidents or performances, if that were the case, the staff who works at South Com and police records would all be up here tonight. When choosing this year's recipient, I had to consider everything looking back on the year. I determined that Jacob Queller deserved to be recognized. On the night of July 15th, 2024, severe storms swept through northern Illinois and northwest Indiana. Despite all the fall safety systems we have in place at South Com, some faltered during the storm. The dispatchers on duty that night did a fabulous job, but they were inundated with calls, including a fatality in another jurisdiction we serve. Living in Cedar Lake with the storm still in progress, self-service was intermittent, I kept dialing dispatcher Queller's cell phone, trying to leave my house, not knowing obstacles I'd have in my own way as the storm was still raging. About the third attempt, Jake answered the phone on the first ring. I said, Jake, I need you at the PD now. They're inundated with calls. He said, no problem, I'll be right there, leaving his own family with no power. Jake got to the PD when I got there. We both stayed. He stayed over three hours. His actions show dedication. He, going back over the year again, he also received two commendations on other calls, one being the Life Saving Award that Hickock just received. He has, has underscored his importance as a reliable team member time and time again, even puts up with our jokes, being State Farm Jake. And I want him to know, that's what made me decide to send him to Shift Supervisor Certification School because of his undoubt commitment to the town the residency serves and proven willingly to step up during worst events over and over again. Thank you, Jake.
Okay, moving on to line item E. This is the Canine Retirements for Hawk and Juno. Chief Sormas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to call Officer Birmingham to the front of Canine Officer. He will announce the retirements of Canine Hawk and Canine Juno. We will first do the Canine Hawk retirement.
So I'm just going to do both of them at the same time. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand up here and represent the Sheroville Canine Unit. For those that don't know, I'm Jake Birmingham. I've been here as a Sheroville Police Officer for the past two years. One of the reasons why we're here today is to reflect on the great careers of two of our Canines. That's going to be Canine Juno and Canine Hawk, and I guess the handlers are pretty good. But as we know, the dogs are always right, and we just hold the leash. We're just the dumb humans behind them. I'm not going to focus on stats, because as a canine handler, we know running our dog isn't always about the stats, it's about the team. Both of these amazing Canines and handlers played an important role in our department, in our community, in my life, and in their families' lives. First time I met Canine Juno was five days after I graduated Canine School, attending Lake County Training. I was extremely nervous, and I was surrounded by some experienced canine handlers and Canines. The first two people I was introduced to, though, was Bonadonna and Parker, and they gave me some great advice and led me, led me to this great place here, Sheroville. But what they didn't know is, while they were training, I was watching their dogs. I was picking up on tricks and tips that they had. And what I remember from watching them was the relationship I saw between Juno and Bonadonna. It was just a strong relationship, and they were knocking out every training scenario. Fast forward a short year later, I started my career here at Sheroville, and that's when I was introduced to Diego and met Canine Hawk. And immediately, I was accepted, me and Dato, as a family member and a part of the Canine Unit. So I appreciated everything they have ever done for me. I thought I was an experienced canine handler until I met these two guys and realized that I was just new to the game. Canine Dato was a top-notch dog, but I quickly was humbled by Dato, or by Diego and Hawk's flawless teamwork. Their connection was incredible to watch, just like Juno's and Bonadonna's. Throughout the training scenarios, Diego would let me take the role as a primary instructor. But whenever there was a problem, Diego would step up and resolve the issue because he was a master instructor, and he helped not only me and Was, but every other canine in the Lake County fixing problems and coming up with a solution. But again, this isn't about Diego and Bonadonna, this is more about Juno and Hawk. So just like Diego being all knowledgeable about canine world, Hawk was right there with him. It was a perfect match. When setting up hard scenarios, we would always question, is this too hard for the dog? Are they going to figure it out, or is this going to be a training scar? And without hesitation, Diego would be the first one to volunteer old man Hawk. And Hawk would go up to the plate and swing until he got it right. Without hesitation, he would pop up, and he would handle it, and then he would walk off with that little old man strut, and everyone would be in shock, all the new handlers. When I entered into this position, I was told the canine position would be the most rewarding thing I've ever done in law enforcement. The connections you will build with your canine partner will never be able to be put into words. The tasks you and your partner are asked to perform will place you in dangerous positions, and knowing that you have your dog by your side, you won't second-guess him, you'll just push forwards. As Doug Parker once said, "You don't pick a dog that you think you deserve, you earn a dog that you do deserve." A canine will match the personality of its handlers, and these two Canines are prime examples of that. So I'd like to say thanks to you, both of you guys, and your partners, for all you've done for our community in Sheroville, for what you guys have done for me, and what you guys have done for our department. So thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to bring Juno in now. The dog, try to keep your dogs separate.
We're not in a hurry. Yeah, we're all good.
One night instead of, they better schedule this meeting quick. There's no, there's nothing to talk about. We don't have to have a meeting. I better schedule that meeting, get that meeting quick. We're going to have to move people around.
Okay, here we go. Okay, we'll move on to line item F, and this will be the VIPS recognition for service. Chief Sormas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I'd like to call up Corporal Ryan Staley, who's a supervisor for our VIPS. That's our volunteers in policing, and we'd like to recognize them for their service tonight.
Good evening. So yeah, along with everything else that's going on tonight, we just wanted to use this opportunity to show recognition to our VIPS, which is our volunteers in police service. Over the last couple of years, we've just had a great corps that works alongside us, which is made up of volunteers from within our community, who are coming out and doing everything from being out on patrol with us to helping with administrative tasks around the building and just making life a little bit easier for all of us here at Sheroville PD. In 2024, just some of the stats that they did, we've had at least one of our VIPS has responded to just over 200 incidents to assist officers, whether that's with traffic control, being out on crashes and different things. They're out there doing vacation checks when requested. In 2024, they did approximately 780 vacation checks, doing fingerprints for citizens when required. They're doing VIN inspections, writing local ordinance violations. Those are all things that would take a sworn officer to do, that the volunteers are able to do, again, to help lighten the load for us. The handicap parking violation tickets, which is a big one, they issued approximately 130 tickets last year. And then, of course, they're out there with us on patrol, helping out with traffic control, and then all of our major special events, they're out there Reader Fest, or not Reader Fest, Sheroville Fest in Reader Park, the fireworks in Roarman Park, they're out there with the annual motorcycle run. You know, when the weather's hot, uncomfortable, rainy, uncomfortable, they're right there alongside with us. So, you know, to have that, that commitment and that dedication from, from members of our community is just awesome, so we wanted to recognize them all for that. Those are just some of the things that we could put numbers on, but there's things that they're doing with us every day that's just making things better for us, so we really appreciate that. With that, we have certificates. We'd like to call each one up and present them with their certificate of appreciation. So no particular order here, but Jerry Lipsky. Sharon Ramos. And then also John Ramos. We have a little husband and wife team here. Dennis Patrick. I think all 130 of those tickets were Dennis's. Jody Jorgetto. Jody? Jody Jorgetto? Paul Petrie. Ron Murphy. All right, Ron's on vacation. Sandy Riggel.
I'm not sure if he's here either. Rolando De Luna. No, Rolando didn't make it tonight either. Thank you again, everybody. Okay, we'll move on to line item G, which is a swearing-in ceremony for Devin Watkins.
Chief Sormas. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. And first and foremost, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to all the officers here today, as well as the family members, friends, who support them not only during this ceremony, but throughout their careers. Your presence means a great deal. I would also like to express my gratitude to elected officials who are with us today, providing their continued support for the efforts of our law enforcement. Tonight, we have a privilege of swearing-in an Indiana-certified police officer, someone who will play a critical role in our community, serving and protecting Shererville from this day forward. I want to personally thank this officer for choosing to dedicate their service to the citizens of Shererville. Allow me to introduce Devin Watkins. Devin is a 2012 graduate of North Judson-Sampier High School. He attended the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy where he graduated in 2021. Devin has previously served with the Culver Police Department and at the Highland Police Department, and we are fortunate that he has chosen to continue his service with the Shererville Police Department. At this time, I'd like to invite Devin Watkins to come forward to be sworn in by Clerk Treasurer
All right, Devin, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Devin Watkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Now, support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The laws and ordinances of the Town of Shererville.
The laws and ordinance of the Town of Shererville.
And the rules and regulations of the Shererville Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Shererville Police Department.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or for the purposes of evasion.
Of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of police officer.
Perform the offices of a police officer.
In the Metropolitan Police Department of the Town of Shererville.
In the Metropolitan.
Police Department.
Police Department of Shererville.
Lake County, Indiana.
Lake County, Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
And to best my ability.
And to best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to Shererville.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once again, congratulations.
Okay, well, line item H, this will be the conditional offer of employment. Chief Sormas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to, I'm requesting the board tonight to extend the conditional offer of employment to Stephen Hawkins and Joshua Lawson. Both certified officers have completed all the necessary requirements for the emergency hire process, and I'm asking the board tonight to extend that conditional offer.
Okay, I'll need that in the form of a motion.
Motion.
So moved. Okay, I have a motion, and I'll need that seconded.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any conversation, gentlemen? Hearing done, would you give us roll call vote, please?
Eric Graff.
Here.
George Corus.
Aye.
David Ennigenberg.
Aye.
David Jarazuski.
Aye.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
That's passed.
Okay, thank you so much, and also I'd like to recognize Stephen Hawkins, the officer that has the conditional offer. He's here tonight. Can we stand up so we can see who he is? Thank you again.
Thank you, chief. We'll go on to reports. We'll stay with you, Chief Sormas. Reports.
Yes, thank you. Next week, on March 13th, Thursday, we have our Coffee with the Cop at the McDonald's that's located at 1855 US Highway 41 in Shererville. That's just south of US 30 and 41. This Coffee with the Cop brings the men and women in uniform together with their communities to connect over a cup of coffee. So if anybody is available and would like to come and meet the department and the officers, feel free. That'll be between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM on that morning. So please, if you have time, and then I heard, I think the fire department might be there too for an added bonus.
Okay, thank you, Chief Sormas. Reports, Chief Patterson.
I have no additional reports ahead.
Thank you, chief. Reports, attorney.
Yes, I'll just reiterate what I presented during the study session in that, as many of you know, the fire department has chosen to institute a merit board. That process has been moving along. We have five candidates that have either been elected or appointed to the board, all of whom at this stage appear to be qualified to serve in those positions. I know the fire department is eager to get things rolling so that they can staff their department appropriately, and we're gonna be working on setting up a meeting for those new merit board commissioners for organizational purposes and to formulate rules for hiring, firing, promotions, et cetera, the substance of the merit board. So that's moving along. I'll give further updates as we go, but I expect to see something coming together here probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks so much for the update. We'll move on to board members. Anything from the board members? Move on to business from the floor. Any business from the floor? Okay, hearing no business from the floor, I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, Bob, thank you. I'll need a second. A motion and a second. We'll need roll call.
Eric Graff.
Aye.
George Corus.
Aye.
David Ennigenberg.
Aye.
David Jarazuski.
Aye.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.